All right, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We are meeting in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street. Would you please rise for the invocation?
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we give you praises and we thank you Father for another day. We thank you for giving us this opportunity, Father. Father, we thank you for the rain that you have blessed us with over the weekend. Father, we ask that you just continue to bless us here in Hood County. Father, we ask that you be with our leadership, these commissioners and judges that we have, our sheriff's department, Father. Just keep them going the way they are going, Father. Keep them going in the right way as they are going. Father, we just want to thank you. We just want to thank you for all that we have, Father. Thank you. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Y'all join me to pledge allegiance to this great nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge of Texas.
Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Is there any special presentations today? Not anything? Would Exelon please come forward? I believe you have an announcement. You should have sat closer, I tell you.
My name's Wes Jackson. I'm representing Exelon. I'm gonna have to get you the details. I was just getting ready to text Casey Willis about this. But the, I believe there's an article in the paper as well that Commissioner Barry mentioned. But the, they're having a community information night about their proposed Wolf Hollow project here in town and just an opportunity for the community to come and get information about the project. And I'll get you some information about the time and place. And I can share it at the end of the meeting if it's the court's pleasure.
Okay, I believe that if you, you guys are gonna expand the Wolf Hollow facility and it's gonna be air-cooled and not use water out of the lake?
Yeah. They're using, it's more expensive to build that way, but it's obviously more environmentally friendly and does not require the lake water to cool, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. All right, the next thing on the agenda is a presentation about Moncrief Institute. If you'd come forward.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. I'm Keith Argonbright. I'm the director of the Moncrief Cancer Institute. It's my pleasure to come to you this morning and tell you about a great and exciting opportunity that's gonna be coming to your county relatively quickly. You might have known the Moncrief Radiation Center in Fort Worth. A lot of people have known that and have a history with that. And it's been a few years, but we're no longer doing radiation therapy, but instead we're focusing on cancer prevention, cancer survivorship, and cancer research. You might also know that we've been in your county over the past several years doing a very robust breast cancer screening program that is funded by both federal and state resources. We're bringing those outside resources into your county. And this year, in your county and about 19 other counties, we will do over 10,000 screening mammograms for women who are either underinsured or uninsured. And of those 10,000 mammograms, we'll find about 250 cancers that would not have been found without the program that we do, without the support of the federal and state dollars, and most importantly, without the support of your community partners. So again, I want to thank you for that and want to thank you for the great work that you're doing along with us to do these screening programs. This morning, I want to talk to you about a new program. It's about a program of survivorship. So this is directed to patients who have had cancer and are now getting back to their lives. As you know, a lot of times, cancer therapy can be both physically debilitating, mentally challenging, and financially can be very, very difficult. And so, in Fort Worth, we've had a program for cancer survivorship now for about two years and through a federal grant called the 1115 waiver program. I think you might have heard about that. There's been a lot of talk about that. This is an 1115 waiver project where we will bring survivorship services right here to the county. Well, how are we gonna do that? We've got a picture of this here. This is our mobile survivorship clinic that is currently being built. It is, again, federally funded. It's about two-thirds of the way back in your program. I apologize, I'm not really following you. Okay, so you can fast-forward the slides to get this. I've kinda gone over all of this. But this is a clinic that is going to be really one of its kind. It's going to be able to not only deliver the fitness services, to deliver a screening mammography unit. There will be two examination rooms on this. It'll be staffed by a nurse practitioner who has special training in oncology. It'll have telemedicine capabilities so that in case there are specialty services that are needed back at Moncrief or at UT Southwestern, we'll be able to provide those services. Again, this is open to all comers. It is underwritten by the federal 1115 waiver program. We will target mainly the underserved and the uninsured, but all people are more than willing to come and utilize this service at no cost to the patient. We are currently having this built. It's an 18-wheeler. It's a big rig. And it will be in the county for a ribbon-cutting ceremony in January. And then, twice a month, starting in February, we'll be working with local partners to actually have this clinic show up and spend the day treating the patients of the county. So I want to, just once again, thank you for all your support. Thank you for your leadership and your facilitation of this. This really is going to make a difference in the lives of patients who have cancer right here. So, thank you. And Judge Commissioners, I'd be more than willing to entertain any questions or clarifications that you might have.
I'd like to know where you're gonna set up?
It's a great question. This doesn't turn on a dime. It's a, it's a, it's a big area. Our preference, and we've had discussions with the local hospital, that makes a lot of sense. And we've worked with the local hospital here on lots of different occasions as we brought our mammography screening unit. This is a little bit different, about the same size, but we will look at the hospitals. Some of the clinics that we have that focus on the underserved is another place that we'd like to bring this. Again, it's really one more of logistics than anything else. Once we get it there, we're completely self-contained. We've got a generator, we've got the satellite hookup so that we can do the teleconferencing. So, we are completely self-contained. It's really just a matter of can we get this in and out and is the, it's not, it's not particularly heavy, the way you would think if you had a full 18-wheeler rig with cargo on it, but it does require a pretty good-sized turning radius. Yes, sir?
Do you have any contingency plans that you're currently discussing in the event that the 1115 waiver funding goes away?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, the 1115 waiver will, we're just starting the fourth year of it. So, we've got two years of operations left. The good news is that we're actually paying for this unit with the first tranche of funding. So if the 1115 waiver was to go away, we'd still have the unit. And so now, we'd have to look in how do you operate that and how do you staff that. But the capital asset would be ours. What we would do is we would look to other grants. SEPRIT is a, another area or another, you know, funder that we would look to for this. Local foundations. This is something that we have been relatively successful with at Moncrief. Since my tenure, I started the directorship about seven years ago. We've been able to attract about $19 million in outside funding for our programs. And so, it's never easy, but the funds are out there. And if the 1115 goes away, we'll just continue to turn over rocks until we can find funding for this. But the good news is that the large asset, the capital asset of the, of the mobile coach is already taken care of.
I'm a little confused as to sourcing here because of the fact that JPS is our anchor hospital for RHP-10.
Correct.
For our 1115 waivers.
Correct.
In Hood County. So I'm wondering, who is your major competition?
Well, we, we are also, this is a, this is a JPS project. And so this is part of the RHP-10 project portfolio. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
That answers my question.
Yeah, we're working very closely with them.
Would you like to introduce your community outreach manager?
Yeah, can, you want to come up here real quick and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Julie John Cox. I'm the community outreach manager for this program and pleasure to meet you. Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
And Julie's really the, obviously, the face behind this and much prettier than I am and the brains as well. And so she's the one who really is making those partnerships. You know, we're, we're, this, this really is a partnership. And we're not here to come in and dictate. We're not here to change any care patterns. We are a resource for you. And we, I think we've proven that with our breast cancer screening program. We've been here a very long time, worked very well with you and your partners, and are very grateful for this opportunity.
Well, thank you, Dr. Argonbright. Does anybody else have any questions?
Judge Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a proclamation, October, for the Granberry Mission. Who's represented? April, are you here today? Come up, Jennifer Burgess.
Would you read that, Commissioner?
I'd like the Commissioner to read the proclamation.
Whereas one in four, every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and whereas approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year, and whereas when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leaves a mark on a family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and they should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, but particularly women and children, and whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confirmed to any group or groups of people, not confined, excuse me, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim service providers, the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we urge all citizens to actively participate in all scheduled activities and programs to work towards the elimination of personal and institutional violence against women and girls. Signed in this, what, 14th day of October.
Okay, April.
Thank you, Judge. I just wanted to say thank you to yourself and the Commissioners in the county for the support. We are here to recognize the 479 families that have been affected by family violence in this county. We are going to do everything we can to implore the idea that this is not a women's issue. This is a community issue. This is a man, woman, and children issue, particularly the children that suffer because statistics show that they will not only, at some point in their life, be a part of either a family violence situation, or they will be an offender in some way. So we will do everything we can to prevent this measure. And so again, thank you for your support and the proclamation today. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but we would like to recognize every month as a month to prevent violence against one another. I would like to introduce Jennifer Burgess as our Director of the Shelter. She does a fine job herself. And Chrissy Durant, who's in the back. She is overseas, the Victim Services Division as well, in Mission Granberry. Thank you, sir.
Okay, does anybody have any questions before we vote on the precedent proclamation?
Not a question, but a comment. I attended a conference on indigent health care last week in Austin and was brought up to speed on where Texas stands regarding domestic violence and the numbers involved. And we don't rank very high, which tells me there's an awful lot more than any of us know about or that is ever made public. So I commend you and applaud you for your efforts in this.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Okay, well, thank y'all. Do you have anything else?
Would you like to say something, Jennifer?
I'm good.
Everybody's good? Okay, thank you very much. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rome, seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Judge, I have two announcements real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Dee Gormly asked me to, she tried to get it on the agenda and she missed the deadline by just about three hours. But Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this week is the Fall Book Sale. Saturday and Sunday is the Open to the Public from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00. Join the friends at the library as they sell books and all the proceeds go right back to help the library. And I know Courtney's in the audience, but I told Dee I would get that announcement. And also, I laid out in front of all the Commissioners and a lot of the appointed and elected officials a grand scary. It does benefit Hood County Christmas for Children. It's going to be the last two weekends of Friday and Saturday nights of this month at the reunion grounds. And I believe Commissioner Dever has an item on the agenda today for Christmas for Children as well. But all those proceeds that are profitable will go back to help Christmas for Children. Thank you, Judge.
I'd like to ask the Commissioner if he'd dress up in that uniform for the next court for this occasion?
If you would buy about $2,000 worth of tickets, I'd be glad to.
I don't know if any, probably, the ones of you that don't really live here, the Commissioner is going to be Elvis in this.
I've already been Elvis.
So, yeah, he is, and that's scary enough, but anyway.
Yeah, that's absolutely scary.
All right, does any other comments that you need to make, Commissioner?
Oh, thank you, Judge.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone, any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? If they do, please raise your hand. The sheriff has a form to pass out. No one? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. If you, does any Commissioner wish to pull anything off? Maybe we need to talk a little bit about some of these items from the purchasing department. Nelda, would you like to come forward and address some of those before we vote on this?
A lot of these are just contract renewals. It's the time of year that we always, in our contracts, do it for one year with four additional one-year renewals with mutual consent of Hood and whoever the vendor is. That's what the majority of these are. There's, I think there's five of them. There's a donation of bottled water from Nestle. They want to go to the sheriff's department, so we need approval of that. Some of the items from the inventory, there was some shelving in there that got wet and it's molded, so we want to dispose of that.
No, the reason I asked the judge to ask this question is I don't, what's the difference between a consent agenda, purchasing aye, and all nine of these items? And then we have an agenda item that's under miscellaneous, under miscellaneous six. I mean, why is it, why is it different spots?
One under six is a contract that y'all have to approve.
The rest of these are renewals, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct.
Does anybody else have any questions for Nelda? Okay, thank you. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Rome. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item is subdivision roads and plats, and I believe there's no item. How about development and compliance, considering take appropriate action concerning developer's request to confirm approval of mylaws as presented? I believe these are previously presented, is that right, Mr. Lenny?
Yes, sir, they were. For one reason or another, they weren't filed at that time, back in June of 2012. Actually, the representative of the developer had come to Commissioner Barry about this situation. And in hand, I brought it to you and we talked, how are we gonna do this? The mylaws that I left at your office, I reviewed them numerous times to make sure. And the mylaws that you have in your office are the same ones of the plat that this court approved back in 2012.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, I guess.
Ratify.
Ratify that previously approved?
Yeah, I don't know what happened to them either. And I know that the developer and the builder both came and asked, and then Dawn and I talked about it. So, first time he can remember that, and, you know, he doesn't know where the ball was dropped for the stamp. But, so I'd make a motion, we ratify the mylaws for the replat of lots 1 through 37 of Phase Two, Section Two, Meander Estates.
Okay. Second. Second, motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rome. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number B is set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replat of tracks 14R-1 and 14R-2 Hidden Creek Estates.
Judge, this replat's located in Precinct Two. Staff recommends setting a public hearing for the November 25th Commissioners' Court meeting.
So moved. Motion made by Commissioner Rome to set a public hearing on these, replat of these tracks at Hidden Creek Estates for 1125. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Mr. McBroom, Budget and Finance, Consider Budget Line Item Amendments for the period of 1016 through, no, 916 through 1006.
Judge Commissioners, the only budget amendment was already on the consent agenda, and that's just the sheriff's discretionary money from the abandoned vehicles. I think you've already addressed that.
Okay, how about ratify the payment of the bills?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, these bills total $2,636,399.37. Just over half of that is represented as internal transfers of $1,393,500. $1,356 of that is scheduled to go to the Equipment Fund 55, according to the budget that you approved. And then, some of the other items, to the City of Granberry for utilities, $47,722.86. For the purchase of voting equipment, to Election Systems and Software Incorporated, To Heartland Asphalt Materials, $38,455.33 for road materials. To Modern Contractors Incorporated, a progress payment on the Animal Control Building for To the Net Data Corporation for annual licenses, software, $119,440. To Spillman Technologies, an annual license fee of $52,179 for that software. To the Texas County, Texas Association of Counties, risk pool payments for insurance purposes, the largest one is $187,734. And to VFIS of Texas, this is insurance premiums for the volunteer fire departments, $50,223.15. All of the items have been listed for you and we've prepared a payment warrant for each item. I recommend these and I request your approval to pay these bills.
Entertain a motion to approve, ratifying the payment of the bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rome. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Stan. Miscellaneous, considering take appropriate action regarding a request to install yarn and crochet creations around the courthouse square. This was requested by Eloise Tectantine and Scott Young. Are they here? Anyone here from that group? I know what happened last year, they had, they put these up and around the trees around the square and it rained and it was bugs that got in them and everything and they, we took them down early and that was, and they wanted them to stay up longer, but it was, they sagged and everything. It was, anyway, it was a problem. So, does anybody have any questions about this?
Are they gonna take them down?
Yeah, and how long, let's, in a motion that you make, that we need to set a date when they take them down?
HDMA's having their meeting this morning. That may be why they're not here. Okay? So, I noticed that HDMA has their monthly meeting this morning.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. I mean, in the email, when I read it again this morning, it didn't say how long they wanted to leave it up or what their time limit was. I don't know when, how long they're gonna take to put them up, if I mean.
I know, they put them up pretty quick. I mean, you know, they, they wrap it around the trees and sew them up, so it's, but, you know, it's up to the court how long you want them to stay up. And I think a lot of it depends on the weather. You know, if it rains, they, you know, they start getting bugs and things in them. So, what's, what's your pleasure?
I would say they should be cleaned up and removed by the end of the week following that holiday.
Okay, let's, let's have a motion. When do you want them, when can they put them up and when do they need to take them down? Commissioner, you gotta put up Harvest Moon a week before and a week after?
How about having them down by November 1st? That way, they won't interfere with any Thanksgiving or any, the Christmas cards that are gonna be on the square coming up and, or anything that goes on. It takes them about a week to put them up.
Yeah, it does.
All right.
So that week before.
I'll make a motion, allow them to go ahead and put them up. And then they must remove them by the Monday following the 1st of November. I think that's the third.
Okay, I have a motion, motion made by Commissioner Barry to allow them to put it up for the Harvest Moon Festival and take them down no later than Monday following the 1st of.
November 3rd is the date.
It'll be November the 3rd.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rome. Have any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Considering take appropriate action, request of the sheriff to allow the Pluxy River Children's Advocacy Center to put toy houses that will be built by Home Builder of Hood County on four outside corners of the square. Sheriff?
Judge, I'm a board member with the Children's Advocacy Center, and so I come before you today. I'm, I guess I'm, got stuck into the fundraising committee. And this is one of the fundraising things that they've been talking about for a while. Over in Dallas, I guess for a number of years, they auctioned off these toy houses and they put them in some prominent malls over there in Dallas. And so they wanted to try that. A few people got together and the people that are part of the Hood County Builders Association, Home Builders Association, they wanted to participate in this. So we had their buy-in and they wanted to help us do this fundraiser for them, or from them to us. So the, the deal, we're way ahead of schedule here, but we wanted to know if you guys would allow this before we could even go any farther. But these toy houses would be built by the different home builders and then they'd be put up for display. So the question was, we need to have them where everybody could see them, so that's down on the courthouse. These things are gonna be about six foot by seven foot, or six foot by eight foot by seven foot tall, something. So they're gonna be kinda big. And they said, well, maybe we could put them down on the corner of the square. And I said, well, that's all, I've gotta go through you guys. So, because of all the planners and the different things that are on the four corners of the squares, what I'm coming before you today to request is on May 29th is when they would put them out. And they would vote on the winners and all this by June 14th, so June 15th, that's on a Monday, they'd all be picked back up. But the request then, after looking at it down there, is to use, utilize like two parking spaces at each of the four corners of the square. So that'd be eight parking spaces away from the parking for a little over two weeks.
Okay, I believe these are gonna be raffled off for the fundraiser. Are they gonna be raffled off and then the owners will take them, or will they, somebody deliver them? What's the? What's the?
Yeah, then the Home Builders' Association said they will bring them in, set them up, and then they'll pick them back up, and they'll all be gone after the winner is decided on that June 14th. So, they'd be sitting there, out of the way, there'd be, they'd be partitioned off there, so nobody would park right up against them. And we'd take two different parking spaces on each of the four corners, and there'd be information out there on voting for who's the best. I'm a little unclear on some of those details, but that's the main request, is can we put them down there on the square and utilize those eight parking spaces?
Okay.
When will you put them in?
Put them up May the 29th, and take them down June 15th.
Basically, two weeks.
Two weeks.
And we knew that we needed, they actually wanted them up a little bit longer, but we know that there's a lot of stuff getting ready to happen, 4th of July and all that, so I told them it's gonna have to be before that. So, they, everybody agreed on the May 29th to the June 15th being the pickup date.
The only thing that I see on my calendar, Roger, is make sure they work with whoever has the Memorial Weekend, there's a, the merchants have something on the square Memorial Weekend. And you said May 29th, is that what you said?
Correct.
May, yeah, May.
Is, yeah, the.
Memorial Weekend's the 26th, okay, we're good then, that's fine. I didn't want, I didn't want somebody expecting to be trying to sell all those squares out, and then they not be available, that's fine.
We were trying to fit it in there, and yeah, I believe I don't have.
I just got to it, Jeff's right, you're exactly correct.
Yep, so it'll be after Memorial, but before 4th of July, for those couple of weeks.
Are you pretty well convinced they're not gonna cause any sightline problems, since you do have four-way stops at all those intersections?
I don't believe so, 'cause they'll be down off into that parking area. At the high point, I guess they'll, they're gonna allow them to be seven foot tall, so it wouldn't be any taller than a pickup truck parked.
Or a van.
Yeah, or a van, and so they'd be well back off the road in those parking places.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow the toy houses to be put up as a fundraiser for the Plexi River Children's Advocacy Center, from May the 29th, 2015, to June 15th, 2015, utilizing eight spaces at the courthouse, at parking spaces.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Pyron, Christmas for Children, consider and take appropriate action upon a request to place Christmas for children collection boxes in county locations. I believe Commissioner Precinct One is sponsoring this. Do you need to say anything?
I know, Christmas right around the corner, and these kids need help.
Getting here quicker and quicker. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for having us. As you know, Christmas for Children has provided Christmas gifts for some of our underprivileged children, up to 3,000 children each year, for nearly a quarter of a century now. We do need the help of the community, and would like to, after speaking with some of the county employees, they expressed an interest in having a drive in some of the county offices, and so we're here to request that you grant permission for us to place those containers.
How often will they be picked up?
As often as they need to be. If all they have to do is give us a call when they, and we'll, we have runners that will get those taken care of and out of the way. Distribution is scheduled for December the 18th, so they would be out of there by the 15th or so, and we would be placing them mid-November. We will be moving into the reunion grounds on the 17th of November, as I understand.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to allow collection boxes to be placed in county offices for fundraiser for Christmas for Children.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Martha.
Your report.
Yeah. Consider a presentation of the third party, third quarter county attorney report.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Ms. Casper asked me to appear on her behalf today, just to give you her report card. She's attending a funeral, and I believe you all have been given copies of what Lori prepared. The first page, and I don't wanna read it to you like a schoolteacher, so I'll just kinda summarize it, and you can let me know if you have any questions, is the Criminal Division, which obviously is the heavyweight in our office, and down at the bottom, the fines and fees assessed, you'll see, have been over $338,000 for this quarter. We have 391 total new case actions, and as far as total cases that were filed, were, is she having it on there? I believe they were about 385. 343, that's summed up on the last page for you on the top line. Any questions on any of that? Have you had a chance to look at that? Okay, moving over to page two. She breaks it down for you, on the Hot Check Division, and I would like to give a shout out to Debbie Morris. She's our new hot check clerk, Pam Crocker retired. Debbie's been there in about a month, a little over a month, and for September, she brought in over $6,000.
Wow.
So, she's done great for us, and she's fitting right in, and just doing a fantastic job, so we're glad to have her. And then, of course, we do have a Civil Division, and that's represented on the third page there, broken down into all our various civil actions that we do. Family bonds protective orders, we've had 12 filed, the occupational drivers licenses for folks who need to stay on the road to drive for work, we've had 23 of those. And of course, you can read that, the bond forfeitures, mental commitments, no new health department cases filed this quarter, and then the CPS cases, the new ones that were filed, five, and the juvie cases, six. So we've had 64 new civil cases done, and then she breaks that down a little bit. There's a lot of action that takes place outside of just filing new cases, and the civil caseload for protective orders, we had 34 intakes, and out of those, 12 were filed. CPS, I can speak to a little bit, that's my docket. We have about 110 children in the state's care.
Did you have a, was there supposed to be a, like a slideshow for this?
We, we can, I don't have.
Because I didn't, I don't have that, is the reason. What you're reading from?
Okay, I thought Lori had sent these out to you all.
Well, I don't have it in.
Email to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Fine?
No, no, no. You keep referring to it, and I'm looking through my packet trying to find it.
I'm sorry, Judge.
No, it's okay, no, it's okay.
Okay, okay.
I just didn't, I didn't know if it was a, had a PowerPoint to go along with it.
The rest of you all have yours?
We've got it. I'm surprised that we don't have it in a backup, but that's, that's fine, Indiana, go ahead.
Okay, so, then maybe this doesn't really sound like much to y'all, and I should be a little more specific, and I'll do that. So, for the Class A and B misdemeanors, and the Class C cases, we've had 343 of those filed. That's the majority of the county attorney's caseload. Then on the hot check cases, of course, I mentioned Debbie, 78 of those were filed, 12 protective orders, six juveniles, 23 occupational drivers licenses, 14 bond forfeitures, we had four mental commitments, no new health cases, and then five of the CPS cases were filed. So, do you all have specific questions on any of those areas? I can break those down more for you, if you want me to.
I have a question. I don't put you on the spot, you may not, I'm sure you know the answer, but if you don't. A few months ago, or weeks ago, we worked on buying tablets and pads to make it easier at the jail, and then for them to do the electronic signatures for the two judges. Is that working and up and working at this point?
That is not up and working at this point. Do we have our IT fellow here?
Yeah.
Sure, I'd like to know why.
Has that been scrapped altogether, or is that still in the works?
That's blood warrants and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Specifically, Judge, what this has come up with, and I think that you and I, and I've copied the court several times on these, is that there was question among a lot of the technology side of this, about what we're passing back and forth across this as text. The video conferencing is really not an issue for us. Review it to make sure it's valid, and then sign off, and of course, handle the swearing in, and taking care of that part of it, and then signing off on that, and how you're gonna manage that documentation has been the biggest problematic part for us. There have been some people that have kind of done it, but with the latest revision of all of the CGS requirements that we're falling under now, it calls into question a lot of this procedure. We're being more and more scrutinized as we go on about how we handle these documents from a device like a tablet, and get it there. Since that last revision of CGS came out, we did communicate with a company that does have a product now to demonstrate to us and the county attorney and the judges, and getting everyone together to make sure that it is an acceptable product for everyone that can pass these documents back and forth.
Securely.
Securely, and that maintains anything that would come up CGS. Not everything that we pass back and forth will be, fall under, directly under CGS scrutiny, but if one item falls into that, it might as well all fall into it.
Isn't this something that the state directed us to do?
They have, to my knowledge, I haven't seen anything as far as blood warrants electronically being mandated that I have seen, but.
Did we buy the equipment?
But we have purchased just, we have just gotten the tablets. That's all we have right now, is a tablet.
I know that Ms. Casper did that out of her forfeiture fund, but.
We do have.
I mean, it was a great idea, and she rolled it out, but that's why I asked the question, why?
It is, it's.
We're not using it.
So we have, we have done that, we've looked at several items. Some of it, Commissioner, was done just under the guise that we could do it with some, there's been a couple of places that have done some different types of warrants, small, mostly to me, they're smaller cities or counties. There've been one or two that are larger, that we're using either something that they have as an imaging system. For instance, Tyler does use one with their full-blown imaging system, that has some capabilities there, but there's nothing on a smaller scale that we've found until just recently, that allows us to keep that and maintain anything that falls underneath that, so that we do not, you know, get in any kind of a situation where we're passing anything that should be kept secure.
Roger.
Can we not encrypt it? I mean, like we do healthcare information.
It has to be kept encrypted, and we do pass it encrypted, but even under the encryption standards, whenever a document lands on a remote device, that document is there, and you have to make sure that that document and any trace of it is removed. We fall under that, even with Spillman in our mobile setup, that even though the data crossing across the network and the internet is encrypted, any data that lands on that notebook also has to be encrypted and removed. It's, it's just, it's become quite a new animal that we're having to deal with, and we can definitely get there. My comment to the court is that we are really there, it's just sometimes the application has to kinda catch up a little bit with some of these mandates.
Judge.
Judge, I stepped up to answer your question. The reason we're trying to move forward to this is times of the essence when you have somebody under the influence of alcohol, or drugs.
Right.
Narcotics, whatever it is, and so that officer is really rushed to get a bunch of things done. So, this is to help streamline everything, and the accessibility to the judge, it has to be, this warrant has to be signed off by a judge from a court of record, so in this county, we have two, we have Judge Messina and Judge Walton. So, to do it electronically, then the officers, whether it's one of my guys, the hospital, the city officer, the trooper, whoever, they can come to the law enforcement center, get one of these iPads, fill in the blanks, get it sent off to the judge, once he looks at it, then, so he could be anywhere in the United States, on vacation even, and still look at this thing, and then do the video teleconferencing thing to get the officer to swear to it, and then do the electronic signature, get it back, so we can get this done in a matter of minutes, and then get the blood work done up at the hospital, and get this person back to jail, and instead of putting it off for hours, or maybe possibly not even finding the judge that's able to do it.
Right, and to put that in perspective, I think on the average, it's one to two hours to get your blood warrant executed and signed.
Yep.
And so, obviously, this would cut down on that amount of time, we'd have more officer availability on the streets, it just, it's a good thing prosecution and arrest-wise, if we can get the rest of it all worked out.
That's why we asked, that's why I asked the question. So, in her next report, in the next quarter, would you, would you make a note that she needs, would she?
Certainly.
Just bring us up to date, so if we're messing out, and we don't have, we need to make sure Jackie's got what he needs to get that done, okay?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, guys.
Is there, did?
I think I'm done reporting on numbers. If there's anything else I can address, I would be happy to try.
No, that's a good report, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know we do have executive session?
I have been told, yes, sir.
Make sure you run off.
Okay.
Fill in for more than one thing.
Motion to approve the county attorney's quarterly report. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry, and seconded by Commissioner Roan, to approve the third quarter county attorney report. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carried. Item number five is consider and take appropriate action to authorize county judge to sign a resolution authorizing the grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture and Texas Feeding Program, and this is in the amount of $42,000, and it's to be used between the dates of February the 1st, 2015, and the 31st of January, 2016. I'll entertain a motion to allow the county judge to sign this resolution requesting this grant from the Texas Department of Agriculture.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Devers, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taught. Any further discussion? You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action on further proven award in the contract of RFB 2014-009 for Armored Car Services.
Our current armored car services contract expires November the 1st, so this was sent out so that we can award a new contract and have them perform collecting money from different locations for us, securely. We opened this bid on September 29th at 2:00 PM in the purchasing department. There were three responses. We actually had Trinity Armored and Dunbar Armored attend the opening, so they were there along with the purchasing personnel. In evaluating the offers, the most advantageous to the Hood County would be Trinity. You should have the figures in your packets as to what everybody bid. We called, because we've not done business with Trinity, we called some of their references. We called Tarrant County, we called the City of Fort Worth, and we called the City of Arlington. We never got a response from the City of Arlington, but the other two, we talked to their treasurers, and got a good evaluation of this company from both. I conferred with Ms. Davis, our treasurer, and showed her all the figures and facts, and in conjunction with her, we decided that the suggestion for award would be to Trinity.
What's the length of contract?
The initial contract is for one year, but we do have the additional four one-year renewals that are in the. that are in the packet with mutual consent.
Who were we with before?
Laser Security.
Is there any, you foresee any problems with the transition?
No, this, with the, their letters will go out today to whoever wins it and that will give us two weeks to get them in place so that November the third, we can start with the new contract.
I know there was some problems with Laser about going in the same building, charging us a pickup fee for this and that. Will Trinity be okay with not kind of double-dipping us?
As a matter of fact, the, the fee was two hundred and fifty or eighty-something dollars if they delivered from one door to the next in this building. With Trinity, it's only twenty.
Okay.
So.
Per stop? Does this, does this building count as a stop or is that per office?
Per office.
Okay.
That's the way it's always been.
Fifty-nine eighty for the previous service we're using now and then the one you're advising is twenty per stop, is what it says on the breakout sheet.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract starting November the third for a period of one year for Trinity Armored.
That's correct.
Plus four-year renewal options. So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action regarding donation of gift of a golf cart, a Yamaha from Mr. James Kuholtz.
Kuholtz.
Kuholtz, who has done the paperwork, sign it over to the sheriff's office. Sheriff?
Judge Commissioners, this came out of an unfortunate incident from a golf cart accident where the driver of that golf cart is deceased, now did pass away from hitting a mailbox, a brick mailbox. So, he has signed all the appropriate paperwork and donated it to the sheriff's office. So what we're planning on using it for is, throughout the course of the day, we have to go back and forth to the impound yard, releasing vehicles, taking stuff back and forth, so that's what we'd be using it for. So, this was his idea to do, to give it to us, so, and we had towed it up to the office after the incident happened here just a couple of weeks ago.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation of a golf cart, a Yamaha, from Mr. Kuholtz, who has done the paperwork, sign it over.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dever seconded it. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
I'd like to ask the sheriff one, one question. If the golf cart has not been in use by your sheriff department, could IT or maintenance use that thing in certain occasions or would it be?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll put it under Lynn's authority to designate out, so, yeah, just touch base with Lynn and, and we'll make sure it can be used when needed.
Is it gas or battery?
It's gas.
Good. Could be used as a pursuit vehicle.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Convening to executive session per Texas Government Code five-five-one dot oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney regarding permit fifty-eight fifty-one, the status of the Water Coalition. So, is that?